I hate these lenses. They have progressive lenses, they're new.
Okay, thank you.
Good to us. Somebody mind getting the door, please? Alright, we're gonna get started. Good evening, welcome to the August 28th zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who is the deputy planning manager for City of Nashua. Across the table, we have Kathy Vitale, Steve Lionel, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mrs. Stoffia Boras, and Ms. Marilyn McKay, and I'm JP Boucher. We have Mr. Walsh, we don't know if he's going to come tonight, and Mr. Carrier, our vice-chair, is not here this evening. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript, and it's also video-recorded. Please direct all testimony into the microphone at the podium, and we ask that only one person speak at a time. If you don't already have a copy of tonight's agenda, it's in the back, feel free to get a copy. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. I'll explain both of those. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: one, that the requested use must be listed in the table of use regulations as a special exception; two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety; three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to the hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; four, any special regulation for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled; and five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the city, of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the audience does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for approval of variance are: the variance will not be contrary to public interests, despair of the ordinance is observed, substantial justice is done, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished, and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua's bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting, which we have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of this case. The order of testimony is as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then, those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then, those in oppositions or with questions will also have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then, the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal, and then, a representative of only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal to the previous speaker. Please direct all testimony to this board, and not the audience. If you have any questions about an application, you direct those to the board, and we'll get those answered. The second part is what we call the public meeting, where this board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during this public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. So, once I close the public hearing and open the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. Please silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, please feel free to step out in the hallway. The acoustics in this auditorium are very good, and we can hear everything you say up here. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Are there any questions for the audience? Okay, seeing now. I'll open the public hearing for case number one, and I'll read that into the record. The owner is Gerard Rapucci, 7 Gaffney Street. The description is follows. Gerard A. Rapucci, owner, 7 Gaffney Street, Sheet 122, Lot 433, requesting variance from land use code Section 1 Addy-16, Table 16-3, for the following: One, minimum lot area, seventy-five hundred square feet required, sixty-six hundred thirteen square feet proposed; and two, minimum lot width of seventy-five feet required, sixty-three point seven feet proposed. Both requests to subdivide one conforming lot into one conforming lot and one non-conforming lot. It's in the IRA district. Welcome, Mr. Rapucci.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
We need to define who's voting on the case.
Yes. So, we'll alternate, and we'll have Ms. Vitale vote the first case, and then Ms. Boras on the second case, and we'll alternate back and forth. So, there is two alternate members here tonight, so what we'll do is, each one will have an opportunity to vote, but, in all cases, both Ms. Vitale and Ms. Boras will be able to have discussions, ask questions in a public hearing, and have discussions in a public meeting. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Go ahead, Mr. Rapucci, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing my case tonight. Jerry Rapucci, 7 Gaffney Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. And tonight, I'm asking you to consider my application to subdivide a single-family lot on Gaffney Street. I have the drawing up there, it's a little hard for me to see from here, so if this doesn't work, I might have to come grab it and put it on this one, so it's closer to me. This lot, I purchased almost three years ago, it's fourteen thousand one hundred and thirteen square feet. It's a slight parallelogram, it's almost a rectangle, perfect rectangle, and it's perfectly flat and usable land. My proposal is to divide it so that there is, the new lot that I create will be completely conforming. It will be seventy-five hundred square feet, and it will have the proper frontage and the proper lot width. In order to do that, if you look at the drawing where the house is there, that, the existing house will sit on a lot that's sixty-six, approximately sixty-six hundred feet, and it's gonna be about sixty-six feet in width. So, I need the relief for those two things, for the lot area, and also for the lot width after, at setback. The reason behind the way I'm dividing this is, we thought about doing it, just splitting it in half, and then we would end up with two lots that are both over seven thousand feet each. The reason I decided against doing that was, not only would I have two non-conforming lots, but it also wouldn't balance very well. If you take a look at where my house is presently, on the lot that's gonna stay there, it's already non-conforming in two ways. It's too close to the street by several feet, and it's right against my neighbor's property on that side of the house, it's within the side yard setback. And those are pre-existing conditions, obviously, and those aren't gonna change no matter what I do to the lot. So, when we looked at it, I thought that it would be better and more balanced if we subdivided, so there's a perfect lot on the left, and the non-conforming lot would be on where the house is. And in order to do that, I'm gonna have to remove the side porch. If you look on the drawing, there's a porch just to the left, near where the subdivision line will end up being, and if I didn't remove that porch, then I would need a third variance for the side yard setback on that side of the existing lot. I didn't wanna do that, I didn't think it was a good plan, I didn't think it looked good, and I didn't think it was very safe, because the fight apart wouldn't have access to the back of the house and so forth. So, this seems like the absolute best way to do it, and that's what brought us to doing that. If I can, I'd like to, I think you got a copy of this drawing in your package. It's a drawing of the area of the IRA zone, which is seventy-five hundred feet required, and I went through and I identified ninety-five properties and several streets covering the area there, and the ones that are highlighted are all properties that are less than seventy-five hundred feet. So, they're all, more than half of them in this area of the neighborhood are less than what's required, and non-conforming. And then, if you look at the spot on this drawing where, does everybody have this?
Yes.
Okay.
We have it, but the highlighting didn't come through well in the black and white.
Didn't come highlighted, okay.
I think you can actually tell in the subtle differences, but it's not.
Well, if you'd like, I can hand up this one, and this one's pretty clear on it.
We have one here, we'll pass it around.
Okay. So, like I said, more than half of the houses in this IRA zone, in these five streets, are non-conforming, they're all less than seventy-five hundred. Forty percent of them are smaller than the lot that I will create with my house there, sixty-six hundred feet. And I point that out just to show how consistent it is with the neighborhood, what I'll end up with. Even after the subdivision, my property will be bigger than almost half of the properties that are in this area of the city in the IRA zone. When I, before this application came into the city, I sent a letter to, or I hand-carried a letter to all my abutters, and I also provided you guys with a copy of that letter. And I introduced myself and told my abutters what I intended to do, and asked them to contact me if they had any questions or concerns, so they would know exactly what the plan was before they got the card in the mail. And the abutters on each side of me are supportive of the application, and all of the other abutters, except for one, were supportive. They were all positive and thought it was a good idea. So, I'd like to move to the criteria of the application. First, public interest. Now, to demonstrate this request will not be contrary to the public interest, I know you know I don't have to show a measurable public benefit. I believe there is one, but I don't really have to show that, we just need to demonstrate that granting the request will not do any harm to the community. Opposition is, and doing harm to the community, it must be unduly and to a marked degree that it violates the basic zoning ordinance and the objectives of the zoning ordinance. Our position is, there's no harm here. This is gonna be virtually consistent with the neighborhood, we're gonna be building a house that is completely conforming to the IRA zone, the standards of the city. It's a single-family house that we're going in there, and so the impact is negligible on one house on a street. We're pretty much in the middle of Gaffney Street, so there'll be no problems with lines of sight when we add a driveway there. That should all, and the utilities are all there, obviously, also. So, there's gas and water in the street, and electricity is overhead, and they're all right there. That being said, we believe that it's certainly consistent with the neighborhood, and in no way threatens the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Then, we'll move to number two, the spirit of the ordinance. As I stated, the new lot will be completely conforming, and it will be bigger than forty percent of the houses in the neighborhood. The lot will be bigger than forty percent of the houses in the neighborhood. Substantial justice and diminished property values of surrounding properties, I'll speak to those two things together. This property was a foreclosure when I bought it three years ago. The condition of the house is sound, cosmetically, it's in disrepair. There were a lot of problems at the house with the previous occupants over the years, and we've straightened all that out, of course. The standard really is, the benefits to the applicant must not be outweighed by the harm to the general public or other individuals. And again, we believe there is no harm to anybody. We're gonna benefit the city, it will increase taxes and tax flow into the city, and we also believe that it will, the Street of Gaffney Street, I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to go down there, it's really a pretty street, it's really nice, all the houses are really nice, and they're all well-kept, and it's a great location in that it's, even though it comes off of West Hollis Street, it's really not a cut-through street, because it's actually between the two lights there on West Hollis Street, before you get to the gas station and the one after the gas station. So, if anybody who's cutting through is gonna take the left before that, they're not gonna go through the set of lights and then take the left. So, there's low traffic on Gaffney Street, there's really not a lot, and like I said, the houses are all nice, they're all well-kept, and we expect to, once I bring the house that's there up to standards and put the new house there, it'll be a great benefit. I mentioned that I'm removing the side porch to bring it into conforming on the left side of the existing structure, and that's what I have as my presentation for the criteria. I also, I gave you the letters, and that's my presentation.
Do we have the letters?
I don't recall seeing the letters.
You passed out.
They should be on your desk, there was two.
I guess they're not on my station.
I have other copies if you need them.
So, Walsh have extra copies?
No.
You don't have the letters, do you?
No one has it. All the extra copies we have are here. There's one more copy.
So, the letter that, the neighbor letter, the one is from the neighbor whose house is on this side of the lot, so it abuts the new lot. The, that letter I got, that they wrote for me in support.
Mr. Boucher, I'm gonna read that letter into the record.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like, and then, I was gonna read your letter to the neighbors also into the record.
Sure.
Just so we have that.
Thank you.
But in the meantime, I'll do that after. We have any questions? Is there any questions for Mr. Rapucci at this time? Or would you like me to read the letters, and you guys can read that while I'm going on?
It's either right, it's fine.
Okay. So, are there any questions for Mr. Rapucci? Ms. Vitale.
Um, a question on, when you're building the home, putting the driveway on the side away from the current home.
What side would the driveway be on, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, is that gonna be on the?
I don't know, we haven't done, I haven't done anything with actually what the actual site plan would be. That I would figure would be on the subdivision itself, going through the planning board when I have that all laid out, but there's, on my existing house, the driveway is on the far right, it's as far north as it can be. So, and on my neighbor's property, their driveway is right to the north as well. So, as long as I place it reasonably, it's not gonna impact either driveway. And certainly, if there's any kind of concern with that, we can adjust, but like I said, I don't have a plan for the house there yet, so I don't know.
Okay. So, Mr. Rapucci, just to review one of the stats that you gave us, you, I believe you said that the lot with the existing home would be still forty percent, it would be larger than forty percent of the homes that you, that were, that you had given us statistics on, right?
That's right. It would be, more than half of them are non-conforming, and forty percent of them are smaller than sixty-six hundred feet. That's the way, I should've said it, but that's right.
And again, just to reiterate, from what I understand is, by removing the porch, there is no side yard incursion, so there's nothing there, and the fact of the matter is, is you just can't pick up the house and move it over to make the right side of the house come into conformance. So, you have an existing situation, it was there, predates some of the zoning, but you are creating a situation where you are coming into conformance on the left side of the house by removing the porch.
Yes, correct. And actually, I think the point you're making is a good one, because right now, if you look at my lot, it looks a little odd. I mean, the house is just way off to the side, and then the rest of the lot is just sitting there, it doesn't look balanced at all. Hopefully, this will make it look balanced.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Rapucci?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of this application? So, what I'm gonna do right now is read in just two letters to the record, and then we'll go on to those who may have questions or concerns. This is a letter that we received, that Mr. Rapucci sent to his neighbors, it states, "Hello, neighbor, my name is Jerry Rapucci, and I own the property at 7 Gaffney Street. In the coming weeks, I will be going before the City's zoning board of adjustment, seeking permission to subdivide my lot into two separate lots. Soon you will see a posting, 'I am seeking variances for the city,' along with a formal notification by mail. These notices can sometimes cause alarm, because they do not include much detail behind the proposed changes, and you are left to wonder what exactly being proposed and what the changes will be. I bought my house at auction, and I know it is definitely the eyesore of the neighborhood. My plan is to remodel the house that is presently there and build a new single-family home on the new lot that I intend to retire in. I sincerely believe this will be good for our neighborhood and benefit all of us. By remodeling my present home, which has been in disrepair since before I bought it in 2015, and adding a new, completely conforming home to the neighborhood, I believe all our property values will most certainly increase. I had had the property surveyed, and have an accurate drawing of the proposal to create a new lot. If you have any questions at all, and if you'd like to see the plans or get more info, so you can understand exactly what I'm looking to do, please call me when we get together, and I can show you the plans in detail and do my best to answer any questions they may have." And you give your phone number and your business address, and thanks, and I look forward to meeting you, Jerry. There's a letter here also, there's a letter here in favor, in support of Mr. Rapucci's request. It's titled, "Chairman Boucher and Zoning Board Members. We are writing in support of Mr. Jerry Rapucci's request for variances for his property at 7 Gaffney Street. As the abutting neighbor to the new lot, we are likely the most impacted property on the street. Mr. Rapucci has been straightforward with us from before we even made an offer on our current house. Recently, he has made an effort to personally speak to each neighbor regarding his objectives, and has provided us with a letter and a site plan to view his requested changes. We have been assured that he intends to use the new property for his personal residence and to repair the property at 7 Gaffney Street. After speaking with him, we are confident that his changes will improve the value of homes in our neighborhood by filling the visually empty lot and improving the condition of his current property. We are relatively new to the neighborhood and have been greeted with exceptionally welcoming and generous neighbors, and we are certain that our street will extend Mr. Rapucci to the same courtesy as he builds his new home for retirement. Thank you for your time and consideration. Ryer and Cynthia Trent, homeowners at 11 Gaffney Street." Alright, with that, are there any people that would like to speak in, with questions or opposition? Please come to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Brandy Collier, I'm a resident at 5 Donna Street.
Could you spell your last name, please?
C-O-L-L-I-E-R.
And address, and they dress one more time, I'm sorry.
C-O-L-L-I-E-R.
Address one more time?
Oh, 5 Donna Street.
5 Donna, okay, thank you.
I'm not a touching abutter. My neighbor at 7 Donna Street, Mike and Maria Burgis are, and I have a letter and some pictures on their behalf, as well as concerns on my behalf. Michael and Maria, I believe, sent a letter in, or they said they were going to, if not, I can give the copy I have. Dear Board Members, the proposed variance for subdivision at the lot at 7 Gaffney Street has the potential to negatively impact our property directly. If the variance were to be granted without certain stipulations and requirements to mitigate those impacts, while the proposed variance would afford the applicant a great fiscal gain, there appears to be nothing offered to the abutting properties except more neighbors, noise, and further loss of what is already a small amount of privacy. Our biggest concern regarding this lot is the four to five pine trees along our existing fence line on the empty lot that is directly behind us, where construction would begin. We have roots that are growing into our property and have been continually dropping limbs, pine cones, and pine needles, destroying our property and our existing fence. This is the most important problem we have. We ask that they are removed in their entirety and root killer added to the stumps to kill what is already grown underneath and into our yard. They are a danger to us, as they have dropped large limbs already onto our property in the last few years, hanging, ready to fall, oh, I'm sorry, in the last few years that thankfully were not catastrophic to us, as we were not outside at the time that they fell. We have several hanging that are ready to fall that are too high for us to remove without a crane going on to this property. They continue to get worse over the years of neglect and damaging our property continuously, causing us hardship. The second issue is, we request an eight-foot fence to be installed, pictures attached, to have our privacy not violated entirely or cause more damage to our existing chain-link fence surrounding our home. We have owned this home for sixteen years without anyone on that lot, and with the understanding that nothing was to be built on top of us. Some minor concerns we would like additional information on is the construction timeframe and the noise element. How long will it take to complete this project, as the existing home on 7 Gaffney Street has been deteriorating for years and become quite the eyesore? The animals that have nested in the roof and attic line of this home have now made their way onto our property and started eating away at the wood in our outside bar, causing significant damage that we have had to replace. As the board is aware, one of the requirements of granting a variance is the hardship aspect. Without mitigation, the only hardship contained in this proposal is that which its granting will cause to the homes already existing in the neighborhood. Should the board disagree with the above statement, we feel at a minimum the existing impacts to our property should be remedied as part of the variance being issued. The offending trees must be taken down to remedy the current disturbance and damage to our property and our existing privacy fence. And to offset the prospect of additional home eroding our already limited privacy, a new fence, as tall as the ordinance will allow, must be erected by the applicant between the applicant's home and our own property. We feel these stipulations, at the very least, need to be included with any decision granting the applicant's desire to double the value of his parcel. We request in writing that the trees and roots, as well as the fence, be installed prior to the acceptance of construction, and prior to construction beginning, if granted, to avoid additional noise and destruction of our property at 7 Donna Street, directly behind the slot. If these terms cannot be met, we decline to accept any proposal submitted to the city. Respectfully submitted, Mike and Maria Burgis." They have pictures of the back of their property that show the continuing deterioration. When Mr. Rapucci got this property back in November of 2015, nothing has been done to it. It is in serious disrepair, aside from having the lawn cut. The only other improvement we've seen on the outside is, he's ripped down an existing porch and started to rebuild it, but it hasn't been finished. We lose our privacy at 5 Donna Street, we all have pools, we don't wanna go into our yards and be able to swim with our kids or grandkids and have our privacy taken away from us. So, we would like to have an eight-foot fence, at a minimum, put up to at least allow some of our privacy to come back if this variance is granted. So, that's all I have. I have pictures, and I have their letter and their pictures.
You're more than welcome to bring the pictures up, but if you do, we have to hold them.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so you can give those to Ms. Vitale, and we'll pass those around. Are there any questions?
It's not so much a question, it's just more information, so, because there was kind of a couple of statements in there regarding fence, so what is allowed is a six-foot fence. An eight-foot fence would require a variance in of itself, so that's not something that we would be able to do as even part of a stipulation here. That could be sought by other means, or by your neighbors, they could erect their own eight-foot fence, but I just wanted to at least make it clear that what is allowed by right and by code is a six-foot fence, so.
Right, we're aware of that. We wanted him to We wanted him to apply for a variance for the eight-foot fence. The pictures that are printed on paper come from the back of my property and show directly over to the existing house and would show where the new house would go, would look directly into my backyard.
I, I mean, as far as I know, we can't make any requirement for anybody to apply for another variance or guarantee that there'd be anything approved in that regard. So, unless one of my colleagues knows differently, it's not an area where we would go with this kind of application, so I don't think it would be something we'd entertain. A six-foot fence is something that is easily discussed and considered as a stipulation.
Yes, sir, we can't call there. Any other questions for?
I guess, just, excuse me, are, are all these pictures from your neighbor's property?
The ones that are, the Polaroid photos are from Mike and Maria Burgis who abut to the rear. The ones printed on paper are from my property that look over to Mr. Rapucci's property, which he does not reside on.
While we're looking at the pictures, are there any other questions for the applicant? You can have a seat, ma'am. If we need to, for you to come back, we'll, we'll have you come back for any questions.
Thank you.
While we're looking at the pictures, is there anybody else that would like to speak with opposition or with questions for this application? Okay, saying none, we'll hold just for a minute. Just be patient with us, we're just going to look at these pictures before we move to the next phase. Okay. All right, so, we're going to move on to the next phase, which is, the applicant has five minutes to speak and rebuttal from the previous testimonies and opposition. So, Mr. Rapucci, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I address them, can I take a look at the pictures?
Yes, absolutely. So.
I also have some pictures of, of my chair.
Yes. Just take your time and we'll grab those when you're done.
Thank you.
Is it too dark?
Let there be light.
Yeah. Yeah, let there be light.
Ask Mr. Rapucci to tell, what, what are these pictures of?
Those are, Jerry Rapucci, seven Gaffney Street. Those are pictures of five Donna, of seven Donna Street. Those are pictures of the residence that's directly behind me. The people who wrote the letter that, that was just read in as concerns. That's their actual property. And then, they're pictures of the trees that they're talking about, which are very similar to the ones they took. I mean, those are clearly the trees.
Mr. Lino, we're going to, we're going to hold on to those pictures you have in your hands. That, that stack, we're going to hold them.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Oh, this is, this, these are, okay, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Rapucci.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the trees, I, I've owned the property for almost three years, like I said. These neighbors have never approached me concerning the trees since I've been there. This the first, when I sent the letter, when I carried the letter around to my neighbors and they told me of these concerns, that was the first I had heard of it. One thing that the, the lady speaking said that was not accurate was that I haven't done any work on the house, on a porch. The only thing that I did was, when I bought the house, it had a deck, and it had a, a deck that went around a pool that had been removed by the bank, and that was a mess, so I had to clean all that out, and I had to put a railing around the remaining deck for my insurance company. That's the only work I've done on the outside of that house. I didn't touch any, the porch that's going to be pulled off, I didn't touch it. I had a professional tree person come in, and I have two really big trees on the house, on the lot, and they, they took two trees down and they trimmed out the two trees that are there. The pine trees in the back that are the concern of the neighbors, those trees are really beautiful. They add a lot of character to the area and to the neighborhood. And I'm not saying that I wouldn't take, do something with them, but I think it's a little more complicated than the way they're presenting it because they add a lot of value. And that where the sun sets in the west there, in the afternoon, those trees provide a lot of shade, not only to my lot, but to my neighbor's lot. And, and so, while I respect that the zoning board has the right to put a stipulation on their concerning trees, actually, I would just like to say that I think that's an issue better left to the planning board in the subdivision time. I think that it, it's going to take a little time for me to figure out exactly what the best thing to do there. There's seven trees there, two of them have to come down, I know that, the tree guy told me that. But the other ones, that, like I said, they're very healthy trees and they're very pretty trees. One of the pictures I sent over, I think, captures how, how nice they are. The reference to the fencing, certainly fencing will, will be an issue that I'm happy to work with. And if the board was to say that I had to put a fence up, I don't really have a problem with that. I would have a problem with an eight-foot fence, as Mr. Shaw pointed out, that would be a variance anyway, can't really do that. I would not be applying for an eight-foot fence. I think eight-foot fences are bad for neighborhoods, I, I, just in general, unless there's a topographical issue where you, you, you can't, with a six-foot fence, wouldn't give you line of sight protection for your property, then maybe I would consider, that's not the case here, all my land is, all the land there is flat. If my neighbor wanted to apply for a variance to put up an eight-foot fence, I wouldn't like it, but I wouldn't argue with them, but they, I think that that burden should be, should be on them. I think the animal stuff is a little bit unfair. The pictures I, I submitted of their property were just to show that they store ladders and a lot of construction equipment in their backyard, and they have a portable garage there on their property. They have a lot of things that can attract small animals. The idea that small animals are running seventy-five feet from my house to their yard, I think is, is a bit of a stretch and, and not really reasonable to say. What else did I want to say? Also, I think some of the issues that they raise, well, I think that, I would appreciate if, if, if the board has questions of me, of what the issues were that were raised that they think are relevant, rather than me go through everything, I would just say, please ask me, and I'd like the opportunity to speak to it. But otherwise, I think some of it just kind of stands on its own. And, I think that's, both covers my, my reply to that.
Thank you, Mr. Rapucci. Is there any questions for Mr. Rapucci? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, ma'am, you have the opportunity to come and speak in rebuttal to what Mr. Rapucci just spoke about, or you don't have to come up. That's really up to you, your choice. And again, just give us your name and address, please.
Brandy Collier, five Donna Street in Nashua. The only thing I really have to add, because I spent so much time on, on my neighbor's letter, is with Mr. Rapucci, he keeps stating that this is going to involve, it's going to raise property values in our neighborhood. Gaffney Street is a one-way street and it is very heavy, it does have very heavy traffic. I've lived there for thirteen years. On Donna Street, we hear the traffic coming down Gaffney all day, all night long. It is a very popular cut-through over there. I haven't had any problems with any of my neighbors with regard to any privacy issues whatnot there, but I think adding another house onto that street will add to the already congested area. There are a number of houses in that area that have double lots that have not applied for variances, that have kept a single family, and they have very large side yards. So, it kind of goes against him saying it's going to add to the character of the, the neighborhood, it's going to make it more in line. It really isn't. If you go down the area, you'll see there's a lot of properties with double lots, with large side yards. The properties that are there that he's saying are non-conforming have all been built nineteen-fifties or before. So, they, they were before a lot of these variances and zoning regulations were put into effect. We're just worried that it'll add additional crowding, additional noise, additional traffic, and now we're going to have, you know, that right up against our property, when for the last thirteen years for me, sixteen years for the Burgises, we've enjoyed having a more quiet where it's a, even though it's thickly settled, the neighbors we have are very quiet. He's proposing to rent out the property that he wants to fix up and use the new one for his retirement, which is entirely within his right, but adding renters into an area where there's one property on Gaffney that has renters and that's it, kind of detracts from our neighborhood. You know, we're all single-family homeowners. We don't rent out our properties. I have yet to talk to any of the neighbors on Gaffney Street that have rented out theirs. And I know the neighbors at two and four Gaffney, or two and six Gaffney, have said they're not fully on board with it, but they didn't have the opportunity or the time to be able to come either to the last hearing or to tonight's hearing to be able to speak. So, that's, that's my only rebuttal to it.
Okay. Thank you. Is, is there any questions? Yes, Mr. Shaw.
I might have missed it either by, in the testimony earlier, but I didn't catch that there was a stated intention of renting the existing.
It's what he stated to the neighbors when I spoke with them. It was when he hand-delivered the letters to all the neighbors, he said his intent was, he wanted to build the single-family home to retire in, and his plan was to fix up, renovate, and then rent out the existing property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Any thoughts? I'll start. Having, you know, again, looked at the neighborhood and, and I appreciate, you know, this right here, this really helps a lot with really understanding what, what the rest of the neighborhood is. From the face of it, we have a home that, as, as, as shown, is already encroaching or is already set close to one property line. So, again, there's nothing that can be done there. You know, the proposal is to create a, a conforming lot, completely conforming to today's standards. And also, the applicant is going to bring the existing home, he's going to remove one of the, one of the incursions on, on the left side of the property. So, the front, fronts, front and the, and the right side, there's nothing that, that can really be done about that. So, so with that said, again, I, I, I feel that it's a good plan. I don't necessarily see, you know, with, with the size lot, so again, we're looking at the size lots, you know, so again, we're requiring seventy-five hundred square feet, correct? And, so, yes, the, the lot is a little bit smaller, but I don't think it's remarkably smaller than, than the proposed lot. It's, it's very close with that. And again, because of the placement of the home, that the, it's, it's almost a rectangle, but it isn't, it's more deep than it is wide, I, I think, again, this is kind of really the only, the only kind of way that this prop, this, this block could be conformed, should be set up with meeting all the other objectives on the new lot. So, with that, I'll just kind of leave it at that as, as my observations. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm, I'm generally favorable on this application. I think, I think especially it's one of those cases where, to me, the, the neigh, the, the nature of the neighborhood and, and, you know, we had the statistics, but, you know, the basic reality is there are a lot of homes that are just around the minimum lot size or, or definitely smaller as, by the analysis that was provided. So, this is one of these cases where there's really already pretty much a well-settled RA zone here, where many of the existing homes and lots are non-conforming, and I imagine there's probably others, not just in terms of area, but maybe have similar kinds of setbacks, like Mr. Rapucci has, has shared with regard to the placement of the existing house relative to the front and side yard setbacks. I appreciate the fact that there was some analysis done in consideration for maybe doing two lots of more equal, you know, approximately seven, seventy-one hundred square feet. I think the fact, especially that the one, that the existing home is already non-conforming in the setbacks, I think it's reasonable to at least create one fully conforming lot. I, I think it's, again, a bit of almost preference, and I think this board, though, has generally been in favor of trying to reduce the total amount of non-conformities in terms of what we might approve. So, I think by, by doing, by having the one lot at least fully conforming, I think the overall net result is less non-conformance and keeping it really involved with the existing property. I think, yeah, so I think, other than, I mean, I, I think the tree issue is, is interesting and I understand the concerns, but I also appreciate the fact that, that is actually can be considered beneficial to the neighborhood, and I, I am inclined to not act on that and let that be the planning board subdivision consideration. I, I would be, I think, favorable to a stipulation regarding a, a six-foot fence along the rear of the property, but if the board's not feels that that's even a necessary thing, I, I would still be in support of the application, but I do think that's a reasonable consideration for a stipulation.
Yes, Mr. Lino.
I'm pretty familiar with, with Gaffney Street since I'm an occasional customer of a business at five and a half Gaffney Street, and I've had the opportunity to observe traffic and, and the houses there, and I don't find it to be heavily traveled, and I agree with Mr. Rapucci that it, it's not something that would, I would, can imagine be used as a cut-through. Admittedly, I don't live in that neighborhood, so I don't see it twenty-four hours, but I don't think traffic is, is going to be a particular issue one way or the other. Uh, I think, uh, yeah, so I think, other than, I mean, I, I think the tree issue is, is interesting, and I understand the concerns, but I also appreciate the fact that, that is actually, can be considered beneficial to the neighborhood, and I, I am inclined to not act on that and let that be the planning board subdivision consideration. I, I would be, I think, uh, favorable to a stipulation regarding, uh, a s- a six-foot fence along the rear of the property, uh, but if the board's not, uh, feels that that's even a necessary thing, I, I would still be in support of the application, but I do think that's a reasonable consideration for a stipulation.
Yes, Mr. Lionel.
I'm pretty familiar with, with Gaffney Street, since I'm an occasional customer of a business at five and a half Gaffney Street, and I've had the opportunity to observe traffic and, and the houses there, and, um, I don't find it to be heavily traveled, and, and I agree with Mr. Rapucci that it, it's not something that would, I would, can imagine be used as a cut-through. Admittedly, I don't live in that neighborhood, so I don't see it twenty-four hours, but, um, I don't think traffic is, is going to be a particular issue, one way or the other. Um, I'm generally in favor of the application as it is. Um, I think that the plan would definitely improve the neighborhood, uh, creating a, a, a single-family home on what's currently an open lot, uh, doing that all over the city, um, and it would be a conforming lot, which is good, and, uh, and Mr. Rapucci intends to repair and renovate the existing home, which is good, and I, and, uh, I don't see any, uh, I don't believe that there would be a negative impact to the neighborhoods, neighbors by approving this, and I wouldn't even, uh, go as far as stipulate a fence.
Ms. Vitale?
Um, I, I'm in favor of the applicant's proposed use of the property. Um, I do think that, um, he's planning to live in it in his retirement, it's going to be conforming, there is nothing that, um, can be done with the placement of the existing house, and I like the fact that the side will come off to bring that within the setback area. Um, you know, the trees in the back, it's going to only be to his benefit to follow the recommendations that he's been given to remove to and keep the others trimmed, so that in turn, I believe, will help, uh, the neighbors. Um, it wasn't, uh, really spoken about, but, uh, for property values, but normally, a new home where the owner's living there, even though it was by testimony, they're supposedly going to be renting the existing house, to have an owner next door to their own rental is usually a good thing and, and not a, a negative in that, in that sense. So I would, um, be supporting of the application.
Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support of the applicant's proposal, and I concur with my colleagues on everything that's been stated.
Ms. McKinnon?
I, I echo Ms. Boras' comments, I echo everyone's comments, especially the fact that there'll be a homeowner living next to a home that he's going to rent out, and we don't know who he'll rent it out to, whether it's family or, or not. I, um, empathize or sympathize with the neighbors, and, um, I would not be adverse to a stipulation to offense, but I would not, not go along with the applicant's wish if there was no stipulation to offense.
All right, and I'll follow through that. Uh, you know, I'm in support, um, I just wanted to get some feeling of where everybody was at with the trees and the fence. I, I don't think at this time that I would want to put any stipulations on that, and if it, it happens at the planning board stage, then that's fine, but at this point, I think that Mr. Rapucci went out of his way to, you know, find out what the hell were the trees were, and I think the fence issue, um, again, I think would be, um, better suited for the planning board. I don't think at this point we have a topical or topical issue where, where one home is lower than the other, and then this, this side, and, and again, you know, homes are, you know, a couple stories, but I think that that's typical of maybe homes around the neighborhood. So, again, I appreciate, um, the, the abutter's concern. I, I think it's always, we see this all the time, where abutters, um, get very concerned when there's a lot that they believe will never get developed or, or, and, and this happens, so, and, and I know that it's change and it's, it's hard, but, um, at this point, I don't think we have, um, I don't think it's necessary for do that, to do that at this time. So, uh, any other discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Um, again, um, in this case, it'll be Mrs. Vitale voting. I'd like to approve the, uh, area variance for Gerard Rapucci, Seven Gaffney Street. Uh, description is Gerard A. Rapucci, owner, Seven Gaffney Street, Sheet One Twenty-two, Lot Four Thirty-three, requesting variances from the Land Use Code, Section One Ninety-Dash-Sixteen, Table Sixteen-Dash-Three, for the following: Minimum lot area of seventy-five-hundred square feet required, sixty-six-hundred-and-thirteen square feet proposed, and two minimum lot width of seventy-five feet required, sixty-three-point-seven feet proposed. Both requests to subdivide one conforming lot into one conform, one conforming lot into one conforming lot and one non-conforming lot, it's in the RA district. We find that the variances needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Some of the special conditions that we spoke about is that the existing home, uh, is placed, uh, far to the right of the property, um, and it's already, um, in, um, some non-conformance for the front yard setback and, and the right side yard setback, so, um, there is no opportunity there to do anything different there. Um, the applicant also will be removing a porch, so that the, the existing home will become in conformance for the left yard setback. Um, we find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible, uh, for the applicant to pursue, as just described, um, other than an, uh, area variance. Uh, we believe that it is within the sphere and intent of the ordinance, uh, we believe that it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels, we have no, um, uh, testimony or, or anything that would lead us to believe it, uh, that to be one or the other. It is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Mr. Shaw?
I just, I know we talked about it earlier in our discussion, but I just like to emphasize it here as part of the discussion on the motion, and, and that is that I think very much a key thing, uh, for my support is that the, uh, this lot size is actually very consistent with the, the neighborhood, and it's not one of these cases where this is somebody coming in and putting a really small lot when everything else is large in the surrounding neighborhood. So, uh, that, that's the thing that's, I think, most, one of the most compelling aspects of this, uh, application, so I just wanted to kind of emphasize that as part of why I'm supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. So, we'll have that part as added to the, the motion that I made, that, that information. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? That is five to nothing, Ms. Boras. I know you put your hand up, but, but thank you. But it's five to nothing with, is Mrs. Vitale that's, uh, voting. So, that motion carries. Uh, thank you. Um, again, um, we understand that there is a thirty-day window of appeal, so if anybody is not happy with this decision, can file an appeal. Uh, good luck. Thank you for coming. All right. We're going to, so with that, I close the, uh, public me, the, the public meeting for, uh, case number one, and open the public hearing for case number two. Case number two, and I apologize for the pronunciation, Ed, Edinalva?
Edinalva.
Edinalva, I'm sorry. Uh, De, De Jesus, or De who, De who's?
Jesus.
De Zeus?
My name is Edinalva de Jesus.
Uh, excuse me, hold on for a minute. I, I'm just going to get your, 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 your application to the record, so just hold on for a minute, and I, I apologize. Um, the address is Thirty-One East Pearl Street. Um, description, um, um, again, I apologize for the name.
Edinalva.
Edinalva de Jesus, uh, owner of Thirty-One East Pearl Street, Sheet Thirty-four, Lot Fifty-seven, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section One Ninety-Dash-Sixteen, Table Sixteen-Dash-Three, for minimum open space, thirty-five percent required, fifteen percent existing, fourteen percent proposed, to construct a ten-by-twenty-five driveway on the right side of the property, RC zone.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Edinalva de Jesus, I'm Thirty-One East Pearl Street, and I have daycare, hm, for fourteen years, and, um, like everybody knows, in downtown is space for parking, and many houses we have to share, you know, the driveway. That's what happened to me and my neighbor at the number thirty-three. They are off C. And, um, my request tonight is because I have the porch on the side, on the right side, and I'm not, use a lot, especially now, because I have a hoop, and my son goes to, went to college this year, so, and I used to play, you know what I mean? So now I have the, 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 the request to try to do the driveway on the right side to fix it, uh, like, uh, problems, especially in the winter time, when we have to share the driveway, um, to my neighbor, and I have a client come in to drop and pick up the kids, and sometimes they have to leave the car on the middle of the driveway. So with this space on the right side, my car normally is stay on the same spot all day, because I walking home. So my, 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 uh, my reason to request the, the right side is to leave my car on the right side, and I have a spot available for the clients come in, and I if they have to stay inside the daycare for a little time with me, so we don't have to bother the, the neighbors to get in and out to the next house.
Okay. Mr. Shaw?
So I think the thing that I wasn't fully recognizing, but, so the park, when you're, the parking and the utilization of the driveway at number thirty-three, is that's by some agreement you have with the property owner at number thirty-three? Because it appears your property doesn't have that, you know, property line appears to be right, basically, at the edge of the left side of your house. Is that correct?
Yes, we have, we have a driveway to share. This happened like forever. When I bought the house, this was like, I, the question I asked was this: We share the driveway with the neighbor. So my house, my fence in the backyard is, is like a, a line, and I have some, some measure, and that behind, before, like, before my, my, my fence for the backyard, I have a little bit more space. That's when I put my cars. Know what I mean? I put our cars, like I have.
And I think, Mr., I'm going to see if Mr. Falk can help me out here, because my concern was thinking about a second curb cut and that, but the reality appears to be, whether it's by some deed or agreement or whatever, we're really not talking about a second curb cut for Thirty-One East Pearl, so, uh, is that accurate?
That's correct, Mr. Shaw.
Okay.
The driveway is actually on the abutting property, which leads to, uh, an area where she can park in the back, so her property doesn't even have a driveway, right, at all, so she's adding this, she wants to add this one spot that would be about this, about the size of one parking space for her lot.
And this is the one more reason to request the driveway on the right side.
Yeah. It just, it's, I just wanted to make sure I fully comprehended it, and it makes sense to me exactly why you're doing it. I just was trying to understand the configuration of the lots and the usage of the other driveway, so I think it is much clearer now.
Why she's here is, um, you know, for the open space, I mean, there's, the lot is not that large, and that, the structure's good size, there is some parking area, there's not too much open space, and she would take away some open space, some grassed area where that little planter is, but in back of that, there's, it's hard, so it's, it's only reducing it by one percent.
Right, by calculation, yeah.
Ms. Vitale?
You're looking, are you looking where you have the planter in the front? Are you looking to leave that, but take right behind it and then like, parallel park in?
We need to take the, 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 the yard, uh, to make a ramp.
Okay.
But I, I know this is going to be bothering for, because of the rain and everything else, but I have like, a plan to do something like, no on the ramp, because have to be a concrete, but on, when this is, is the liner, I can do like with, uh, stone and on between grass, and then I can, you know, solve the problem to take the front.
Okay.
I have a picture here.
Any other questions? All set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Ma'am, your name and address, please.
My name is Filmina Ferreira. I live on Fourth Avenue Street, but I'm here in favor of her because, uh, uh, she has that space there, and, uh, it's really nothing there, just, she made like, uh, pieces of wood, and it's like, uh, it's fenced in, but she's not really using it, so, as, I feel, you know, I feel like this will help her, and so I'm like in favor of that.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else with, uh, like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anybody with questions or concerns with the application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. Lionel?
Um, I'm, I'm in favor. I didn't quite understand until tonight that she has no driveway at all, uh, in this house, and, um, this small, uh, you know, removing the, the little bit there of the planter and parking her car there, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Oh, the, and, and again, the voting will be Ms. Boras at this, in this case. Uh, Ms., Mr. Shaw?
I, I pretty much echo Mr. Lionel's, uh, both, uh, comments and even kind of understanding, so I, I'm, I'm good with it.
Ms., Ms. Boras?
I'm in favor as well.
Ms. McKinnon?
I'm in favor. Makes logical common sense. I would do it, too.
Ms. Vitale?
If I was voting?
No, okay.
Good.
I'm also in favor. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Edinalva de Jesus at Thirty-One East Pearl Street. Uh, the description is, uh, for a variance from Land Use Code, Section One Ninety-Dash-Sixteen, Table Sixteen-Dash-Three, for minimum open space, thirty-five percent required, fifteen percent existing, fourteen percent proposed, to construct a ten-foot-by-twenty-five-foot driveway on the right side of the property, this is in the RC zone. Uh, the variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, uh, given the special conditions. The special conditions are that there is no driveway already on this property, there is, um, uh, usage of the driveway on the, uh, abutting, uh, property of Thirty-three East Pearl, uh, but, uh, there is no actual driveway on this property. Uh, the, uh, so there's really, this is the only place and spot it really could be done. Uh, it does slightly reduce the, uh, open space, uh, incursion, but it's, uh, very minimal, just a one percent difference, uh, so I think that's, uh, uh, pretty, pretty reasonable. Uh, it's within the sphere and intent of the ordinance, uh, there's no indication of any negative, uh, effects on property values. Uh, it is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, and with that, I move to approve, uh, this area variance request.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That is five to nothing. Congratulations, your application passes. Just, just again, be aware that there's a thirty-day window of appeal, but probably unlikely in this case. Ma'am, um, just a message that you need to call the DPW to get a curb cut permit. You need, and if you have any questions, please call Mr. Falk. Okay, you're welcome.
We'll be opening up any area onto the public right of ways, so you do need a permit from the DPW. Now, just go to the Department of Public Works and talk to the street department about a street opening permit. If you want to call me tomorrow, I can talk to you about, about it.
All right. All right, with that, I'll close the, uh, the public meeting for case number two and open the public hearing for case number three. Well, Seth, keep going?
Yeah.
Um, this is for Francis and Polly Kozal, Kozalka, I'm having a hard time tonight. Um, the applicant is Gary Sinclair, the address is Twenty Park Avenue, uh, description is Francis M. and Polly M. Kozalka, owners, Gary Sinclair, applicant, Twenty Park Avenue, Sheet One Twenty-four, Lot One Fifty-eight, requesting a variance from the Land Use Code, Section One Ninety-Dash-Sixteen, Table Sixteen-Dash-Three, to encroach twelve feet into the twenty-five-foot required rear yard setback, to construct an eight-foot-wide, second-story bathroom dormer on the back of an existing home that is already encroaching twelve feet into the tw- twenty-five-foot rear yard setback. It's in the RA zoning district. Welcome?
Good evening. My name is Thomas J. Leonard. I'm a lawyer here in Nashua at Twenty-Nine Factory Street, representing Frank and Polly Kachelka, who are the owners and applicants, and I'm also representing Gary Sinclair, who is the contractor who proposes to build a dormer. Uh, the property is at Twenty, uh, Park Ave, it's zoned RA. Um, the setback is the rear setback that we're talking about. This is an existing home, it's been there since, uh, nineteen-fifty-two, basically as it is. It was built by permit, and the Kachelkas moved about, uh, ten or thirteen years ago, ten or fifteen years ago, I think in, uh, two thousand and two. Uh, the home was existing at that time, they haven't made any changes. Uh, they assumed and, and, uh, believed that everything was in order. As it turns out, the existing building is somewhat encroaching into the rear, uh, setback, and that presents the, the circumstances that we're, uh, here. And that presents the, the circumstances that we're here asking for relief. Excuse me. The proposal is simply to have a small dormer for the second floor. It will allow for a bathroom to be built over another bathroom so the existing plumbing can be used in an efficient way. It also turns out that the bathroom will be servicing two bedrooms on the second floor. There is no bathroom on the second floor at the, at the present time. There really isn't another option for the bathroom, given the present configuration of the home and the, the property. But as a practical matter, there really isn't any, um, increasing or there's no additional encroachment, if you will. It's all within the existing foundation. So it's a pretty straightforward, small modification to the roof line, really. Uh, the reason that we're here today is by definition setback goes from the ground to the sky. So technically speaking, an alteration of the, of the roof line, uh, is a, is a need for an ex, a variance. The encroachment, so if you, I think that you can see in the, uh, application that I presented, there's a, a, a map of the area, the assessor's map. And it shows the property as number twenty. It also gives you a, a sense of the neighborhood. This is an older, established neighborhood, established before the zoning. Many of the homes were built before the zoning rules that are presently in place. And you can kind of see from the, from the, uh, assessor's map that I'm sure there are many, uh, encroachments into the different side and, and rear yards. Uh, the houses, the, the neighborhood is a, a nice, established, well-kept neighborhood. This will continue along those same lines. Uh, it won't be anything different than is, is presently there, really. And, uh, it won't, uh, be any adverse impact whatsoever. It's not a nuisance in any sense. Uh, everybody has, uh, kind of proceeded in good faith. So there's real no, really no, um, fault to be assigned in this, in this case. It's just kind of the way the neighborhood is and the way the home sits on the lot. We're not asking for anything other than that small variance for the encroachment. As I say, Mr. Sinclair actually went out and measured it. And it, and by his measurements, the present home is sixteen feet from the existing fence along the rear lot line, which would be a, a nine-foot encroachment. Um, by the GIS map, it might be a little bit more than that. So I think the application is, is somewhat vague on that front. But it's basically, uh, a change in the roof line with no additional encroachment over what presently exists. Um, we, Mr. Koczelka did communicate with a number of the neighbor, neighbors in the neighborhood. Nobody seems to have any objection. Several people said they have no objection. But certainly, I don't believe he's received any, any negative comments whatsoever. Going through the points, I think, um, really probably it's, it's just as simple to say that, uh, we tried to be clear in our application, setting forth the reasons for each of the five points. I think they're pretty clear. I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions that you may have. Uh, but I think the application probably stands for itself. Uh, the bottom line is that it's an existing situation with very little, uh, change.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Attorney Leonard?
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody that'd like to speak with questions or concerns or oppositions to the application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Uh, Ms. Vitale will be voting on this case. This is pretty straightforward to me. There's, there's a house that's in a non-conforming situation. We're putting an addition to the second story. I mean, we're just putting a dormer. So again, as Mr., as Attorney Leonard stated, there is no additional footprint. And, uh, again, um, if it was possible, which, which, you know, we can understand the construction of a house. It's the stairway's probably pointing up to the back of the house. To put that dormer on the front of the house, that little dormer would kind of look, uh, wouldn't look good for the neighborhood. So again, um, the dormer on the back of the house is, is, I think, reasonable. Um, it's the really only place to do it. And again, it's not gonna, I think, in, have any impact on, and on, in the neighborhood or the neighbors or anything. So I'm in favor of the application.
Pretty much echo what you just said.
Ms. Lianell.
I'm also in, in favor of the application. I'll, I'll note that this will increase the value of that house and, and, uh, also that tends to, in a minor way, increase the value of surrounding houses indirectly.
Thank you, Ms. Lianell. Ms. Vitale.
And I would agree with all of that. And it is definitely within the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
One thing, and I think it was alluded to by Attorney Leonard, but I mean, it appears that a lot of these homes have little to no or very little, um, rear yard setbacks in general. So this house is not unusual either. So, and again, the modest kind of, you know, dormer addition is not even that significant of a change as, as it is. But it's, it seems to be a fairly common thing, uh, in the local neighborhood here.
The home at eleven Stevens is very interesting. It actually goes right over the lot line.
Yeah.
So, so, and there's some homes across here, like I said, I write on the sideline. Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm in favor.
Ms. McKay?
I too am in favor. Echo my colleagues.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion? Ms. Lianell, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. Uh, the owners are Francis M. and Polly M. Kozalka. Uh, applicant is Gary Sinclair. The address is Twenty Park Avenue, sheet one twenty-four, lot one fifty-eight. Requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety sixteen, table sixteen dash three, to encroach twelve feet into the twenty-five-foot required rear yard setback to construct an eight-foot wide, second-story bathroom dormer on the back of an existing home that is already encroaching twelve feet into the twenty-five-foot rear yard setback. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The special conditions are that the existing house, uh, foundation is already, um, at this, uh, encroaching on the, the rear yard setback. The addition here would not change, uh, would not encroach further on the setback. And there is no other reasonable way to, uh, get this benefit for the property. Um, it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It does not, uh, adversely affect any of the surrounding houses. We don't believe that it's contrary to the public interest and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this variance request.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application is approved. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing for case number three and open, uh, the public meeting for case number three. I'm closing and I'm opening a public hearing for case number four. This is for Albert E. Barubi Revocable Trust, La Favor Folio LLC, ninety-three Locke Street. Description is Albert E. Barubi Revocable Trust. Owner, La Favor Folio LLC, applicant, ninety-three Locke Street, sheet forty-one, lot sixty-three. Requesting use variance from land use code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number fifteen, to construct a six-unit multifamily building with associate site improvements. It's in the GI district. Welcome, Attorney Purnia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name for the record is Gerald Purnia. I'm an attorney with offices at Twenty Trafalgar Square in Nashua and here representing the applicant this evening. This property is located on Locke Street.
Mr. Pucci? I mean, I'm, Mr., Mr., Mr. Purnia, just the mic, I know.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. Down by the BAE parking lot. It's this lot here that we're talking about this evening. Um, this lot is located in a general industrial district, which does not allow housing. Uh, the lot is point five-two acres and had a house on it that burnt down. Across the street, the zoning is RC, which would allow twelve-point-five units per square, for, per acre. The six units would be allowed by a matter of right, and I wouldn't have to be here this evening, even though I'd like to come and see you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, could I just pass out a, uh,
Yes.
Some pictures here that I'd like to put in the record. If I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first paragraph, the first picture on A shows the lot. It's, uh, forty-one sixty-three. These are all, show you how old the tax maps are of the city of Nashua. The house is still on it. The house has been gone for many years. On B, again, shows, uh, the, the houses in the area. It shows the parking lot that abuts this piece of property. And it also shows how large of a lot this piece of property is. See, if you can find the site where it's marked site, you can see the difference between the RC and the general industrial. As indicated, general industrial doesn't allow housing, even though housing exists. And those abutting this piece of property are, are housing. In back of tab D is showing where the six units for the townhouses would go and the parking. Um, this is just, we would have to go to the planning board if this is approved. And we probably would be adding a little bit more parking in, in that particular area. And the last tab shows again, it's a smaller version of what's on the board. Um, shows Locke Street and the multifamilies surrounding it. Um, this lot, uh, has been used for, for housing. Uh, it wants to be used again for housing. The proposed housing, uh, is the type that the city of Nashua needs. And the community development director has indicated, uh, the need for the housing in this area in the city. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but, um, there's no density, um, calculations made because it, the six would be allowed if they were in an RC, in RC district. So in the RC district, not necessary.
Any questions for Attorney Purnia? Mr. Shaw.
I'm just trying to resolve the, this drawing. It looks more like a side unit.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped all, I skipped. That only has five units. And the only purpose that it was put in there would show because of you, when you went out there, you saw that the land slanted. The housing would be probably put in so it would take advantage of the housing, of the topography that exists. It's, that's the sole purpose of it.
Okay. And I think tab B, right, I, I see this as an aerial, but it also gives you the topography lines, which you can kind of see that what's going on there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Purnia? Anybody else to speak in favor of this application? Anybody in the audience that'd like to, that have any, that has any questions or concerns with this application? Ma'am, please come on up and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Leanne De Jesse. I live at eighty-eight and a half Locke Street. Um, my family and I have concerns about this six-unit apartment, apartment building or townhouses going in across the street. What was originally there before was, I'm not sure if it was a one-family with an in-law apartment or a two-family. The way the topography is, it sloped down in the back, so it was hard to tell. But the, um, when it did burn down over the winter, we weren't sure what was due to go in afterwards. But we have major concerns with the amount of traffic, the amount of people that's gonna be living there. And where it does abut, the BAE parking lot, excuse me, I'm freezing. The, um, the, the traffic coming out of the BAE parking lot to begin with can be very hard to navigate, even coming out of our driveway or out of Perham Street. So the amount of people, if it's a six-unit apartment, two people per u, per unit, that's twelve more cars to the, to the driveways, even if they're parking underneath, just trying to get out of that, that intersection right there. If it's, uh, four fam, four people per family, that's thirty-six more people where there was potentially only three or four people living there before. So the overcrowding, the, the congestion, the traffic, the noise. There are multifamily houses all around us, and that's another concern. We're more than welcome and open to having more multifamilies in the neighborhood. But these houses are built upon each other. They're extremely close. You can hear the people next door to us talking on their phone with the windows closed. I could tell you everything my neighbors are doing at any given time of the day. Behind me, on the side of me, on the corner of Perham, you can usually hear the neighbors over there. We can see each other through the windows at all times. There's absolutely no privacy. And that's obviously one of our other concerns. With these townhouses going in, we have problems with absentee landlords. Landlords not taking care of their homes. They build them, they rent them out, they move on. I don't know if that's the case here, but having a landlord that would live there would be a great joy for our neighborhood 'cause we do lack that. Because they do just kind of tend to rent to anybody who's willing to pay. And sometimes that doesn't always work out very well. And we end up with some not so, not so great neighbors. And we've had some very scary neighbors in the neighborhood. And that's what we're trying to avoid. We're, again, welcoming another multifamily, but just don't think a six-unit apartment is, be reasonable.
So we're gonna have Mr., uh, we're gonna have Attorney Purnia answer that question when he comes back. Okay, so he'll, he'll, he'll address us for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any, hold on.
Yeah.
Any questions, Mr. Shaw?
I didn't, what's your address again?
Eighty-eight and a half Locke Street.
Okay, so you're at the corner of Perham.
Yes, we're on the corner of Locke and Perham.
And is your structure a two-family?
It was, and it's now a one-family.
Okay.
Yes. And we are owner-occupied. We live there, been there for almost eighteen years, so.
So, ma'am, um, just, just, just one question I had.
Yes.
That, is it back entrance of the BAE parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
So is it like, is it a period of time, like, like in the morning and the afternoon where it gets really busy?
It's, well, that's a hard answer. Um, it is morning, lunchtime, and dinnertime. But many people do cut through, um, at all hours of the night because people do not, um, the gates are not always shut. So.
So they're not going to the light going up, right?
Oh, they do sometime, yes, they do.
But they're, they're cutting through the lot.
Yes, they cut through the lot.
Yes.
And I've also had, I don't know what happened to the stop sign, but we've actually spoke to BAE. And we had them put a stop sign in for a short time. It disappeared after the winter. I don't know if they took it among themselves to take it out, or if it was the city that asked them to take them, take it out. Because I think it's kind of a gray area where city land ends and BAE begins. As we call it jokingly, like no man's land right there.
So, so again, um, and again, it's just a question, uh, which is kind of a comment. So it appears to me that, that you'll, you'll have that regular traffic for BAE that's normal. Um, I know there's at least three entrances there, right, around that lot?
Right.
But then the other issue is if it's late night stuff, it's probably people that are just, don't belong there and are just using that area.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
I was just trying to get an idea what the traffic was.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All set? All right, anybody else in the audience that have any concerns or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none, uh, Mr. Attorney Purnia, you, you have five minutes to come back and talk to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Traffic, what can I say about traffic? I'm next to a large parking lot that I have no control over. It's the largest employer in the city. And we're very fortunate as a city to have, uh, a, a business like BAE. It's gonna be, we have twelve cars. Twelve cars over a period of a day is like miniscule. I will state to the board that I was there, I've been there twice. And both times, at different times of the day, both times I didn't have a problem. I am not saying that she doesn't have a problem or she doesn't have, because it, I, I wasn't there at seven-thirty in the morning. And I'll tell you, I wasn't there at five. But I was there at eleven-thirty on one time and the other But I was there at 11:30 on one time, and the other time, I forgot exactly what time I was. But I didn't have a traffic problem. Traffic's going to be a problem to us. We think it can be handled. The people leave at different times. As indicated, this is a, a piece of property that was used residentially. That's what we want to use it for. We try to, I will say that the townhouses, a purpose of them is that they be a little bit different and upscale from just putting a rectangular building on it and putting six apartments in it. We think that it will improve the area, and be glad to answer any other questions you have.
Any other questions? So, so, again, one of the questions was asked, it's going to be rental property.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. At least to start with.
Start with.
Townhouses can be easily converted to condos, which would be single-family, and then they would take care of. I can tell you that I'm familiar with the person that wants to build these, and the applicant, and their properties are well taken care of.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Attorney Prunia? I'm sorry. No, thank you. Ma'am, per our bylaws, you have an opportunity to come back and speak to what Attorney Prunia spoke about, or you can just rest and not come up. It's up to you. And again, just your name and address again, please.
Again, my name is Leanne DeJesse at 88 and 1/2 Lock Street. Just to discuss the traffic issues again. Again, I've been there for about 18 years at the same address, and the traffic issues is a constant. I know adding 12 more cars, if not more, or potentially less, is minuscule in this large city. But in our little neck of the woods, it is a huge ordeal in that one spot. I am involved with the crime watch. I am there faithfully almost every month, and it is a constant request to have the police take notice, and they do. But it's just a constant issue in our neighborhood. So, between that and the noise, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any, excuse me, any questions for? Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open a public meeting. Again, Ms. Boras will be voting on this case. Ms. Vitale?
Into the concerns with what goes on at that end of the parking lot, I would almost think that having the townhouses there might help that situation because you have more eyes and more people monitoring it and raising their voices against, you know, things that shouldn't happen in an area. If it was outside and it's a replacement, I, I think it's a good proposal to have the six there. I believe the lot size meets it. I like the townhouse, you know, I think that, I think it meets the variance needs that are requested.
Okay. Ms. Lino?
I'm in support of the application. I, as Ms. Vitale said, I think that it would actually be a benefit to the neighborhood. I don't see the additional traffic being significant. There will be, will be some, but I think that over unbalance that this will enhance the neighborhood rather than detract from it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in support of it. I think the thing is, this really does, I think, have all the feel of the, I think it's RC zone, right, that it's, that it's abutting, and yet it's ended up in the GI zone, but this clearly is, this, these, I think it's just the two properties on this side of the BAE, and then the other ones, the rest of the way down Lock Street, they kind of fell into that. I think it's almost kind of unfortunate the way the map got drawn, but I think the feel of the street and those properties is very much the RC zone, and this proposal meets that criteria, so I find support of that. I do, I mean, I appreciate the concerns about traffic. I think it's invariably a concern with, you know, just any additional, you know, living units in a densely, you know, inhabited area, but I don't think it's going to actually have a major or significant effect.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in favor, and I concur with my colleagues.
Ms. Pukka?
I too am in favor. I understand the traffic issue with BAE, and the street is small, but I think that this will help the aesthetics of the street. And I know BAE has gone to a lot of trouble or extra work because they have speed bumps in their parking lot, they have stop signs and stop written into the parking lot itself because gateways is right there also, and people used to come through and use that driveway rather than go to that light a lot of times. And so, gateway switched so that you can only go in one and come out the other, and BAE put all of those speed obstructions into effect. And so, I think that maybe, just maybe, the look, like I said, the aesthetics and will be a help rather than a hindrance. There'll be more people. I understand the privacy and maybe hearing, but I still am in support of this application.
I'm also in support of the application. I, I think the traffic is what it is. I, I think no matter what happens, and, you know, BAE could go through another hiring spurt and increase their employees. So, I, I think that's, unfortunately, that's just their downtown, and, and again, like the applicant stated, it's one of the largest employers in Nashua, so, so that's a pre-existing condition. I think that the, the townhomes, as described by Attorney Prunia, the applicant, is more of the upscale style, so this is just not, you know, again, slapping up some units to get quick rent. And I know that when Attorney Prunia testifies that, that the, that the owner of this property is going to take care of it, I tend to believe that. I think there is credence in that. So, I do, again, appreciate and understand the concerns of the butter, and don't discount that at all, but I think that in the end, this will be better. And, you know, again, you know, what other opportunity would be if it, you know, is in the GI zone, what could actually go there? And I think, again, this neighborhood really tends to be more, actually, Mr. Shaw said is that, you know, just the way the lines were drawn, but is more, should have been more of that residential area. So, again, I'm in support of the application. Anybody like to make a motion? Oh, excuse me, Ms. Vitale, you want to say something?
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, the fact that he's, he's got the density where it's above the minimum standards on, for that area too, is a bonus.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion for, for Albert E. Barubi Revocable Trust, LaFavor Folio LLC, 93 Lock Street. Description's Albert E. Barubi Revocable Trust Owner, LaFavor Folio LLC Applicant, 93 Lock Street, Sheet 41 Lock 63, requesting use variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-15. Table 15-1, number 15, to construct a six-unit multifamily building with associate site improvements. It's in the GI zoning district. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property. We spoke about when, the, the area that it's in, how it's predominantly residential. The RC zone is right across the street, and there is, you know, residential units on that side of the street. This was a two-family home per testimony that used to be there. And the applicant has stated that this will be more of a, an upscale type of townhomes in following the contour of the property to blend it in with the neighborhood. Find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance is within a spirit and intent of the audience, will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. I also want to add, again, the comments that Ms. Vitale made, that not, if not for the zone that it was in, that it does fall within the, within the.
RC.
Yeah, it's an RC, it falls within the RC zone districting. It falls within that, in that criteria. So, again, where the RC zone is right across the street.
I'll second. Second by Mr. Lino. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? It's five to nothing. Motion, your motion passes? Good luck. Again, just to be aware, there is a third-day window of appeal, so if you have any questions to that, other than that, they will move on to the planning board process next. It will be in the next public meetings. Thank you for coming. Want to take a five-minute break? Please. We'll take a five-minute break.
I'd like to open the public hearing for case number five. It's for Wilmar LLC. Applicant is Western Associates, dresses for Blackstone Drive. Description is Wilmar LLC Owner, Western Associates, applicant for Blackstone Drive, Sheet H, Lot 520, requesting the following. Use variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 193, to construct a climate-controlled self-storage facility, and variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-45, Section 8, to allow a convenience store gasoline station, store gasoline station within 750 feet from the property line to property line to another gas station, which is 512 feet proposed. It's in a GB zone, Ward 2, zoning district GB.
Welcome, Mr. Prunia.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier, office at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua, and here representing the applicant this evening. May I pass out a few things?
Please, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to go to the other ones. There are two things that we're here looking for this evening. The first, I'll start with the storage facility. The storage facility was allowed by right until 2013, when I rezoned that area from park industrial to general business. Up until that time, a storage facility was allowed, and now we have to come for a variance. But that will give you some intent that the city at one time, under the zoning ordinance, was allowing in that area a storage facility. And the purpose of going to the general business was that the front part of Amher Street, as we all know, that's where the commercial retail people go and users go all up and down Amher Street. This piece of property is located in the rear, and doesn't need the frontage. It has the rear piece of property, and it can be, once you know where it is, you don't have to need the frontage on exposure of Amher Street. It is also a quiet use. The average traffic is five cars a day. The building will be designed. The building will be designed so that it looks like an office building and the... But it doesn't have the traffic of an office building. And the use for the height requirement, the height request of five, it's not a request, it's allowed use, the five stories is allowed use in that area. The use is less intensive than what could be constructed in the GB district, which it is in. As an example, you could put in there meeting halls, lounges, convention centers, amusement enterprises, sports stadiums, bus station, and, believe it or not, a sanitary landfill can all be put into the general business area. The trees would surround the property as shown in these pictures. And why don't we go through? The number one shows the example of where the buildings will be generally placed or proposed to be placed. The second tab shows the various zoning in the area, and you go down to Blackstone Drive, you see right across the street is PI. You see right in the back of it is PI. So, in the area, there's areas that are zoned PI that would allow for the storage facilities. And it was a PI zone up until the time of the rezoning. While we're at, in the package, if you go to tab three in the rear, if you go look at the blue line outline of the particular lot, you'll see that there are multiple cars in that area. It's a large lot in the rear that could easily take this facility in the rear. And also, if you notice around the blue line, there are trees, and those trees will be attempted to be kept so that it would sort of hide from the neighboring condos, any of the, the building itself. And the trees are well over 50 feet. Some of them, I would say, go almost to 100 feet in that particular area. We state that it's not out of character within the zoning ordinance because it was allowed previously, and their Park Industrials had zoned areas right next to it as shown in the plans. Spirit of the ordinance is met in that it is a commercial use in that particular area. Now, as far as the gasoline station is concerned, the introduction to section 190-45 says the preamble. "This section reconciles the interests of the city and residential neighborhoods relating to health and safety, traffic, property values, and aesthetics with the economic interest and public needs relating to gasoline stations." Well, when this ordinance was written, and way back with the footage, gasoline station, as I remember them, was one that you went in for gasoline, you got your tires replaced, you got your motor worked on, you did all those things. They have completely changed now up until this particular period of time. Most of them don't repair cars. Fact is, I don't think any of the new ones make any repairs on any of the cars, except the one that's still next to Whole Foods on that side of Amher Street down in that area. I think they do still make some repairs on cars. But it's one of the few in the city that gasoline stations are like somewhat similar to 30 years ago. I state to you that Amher Street at this location is not a residential neighborhood. It is a commercial retail area and is zoned to allow this particular use, the gasoline station. The only thing we're asking for is the difference between the 750 feet and the 512 feet that we're from it. Will not affect the traffic. This is not a destination use. You're not going to go to this gasoline station to buy gas if you're in the south end of Nashua, or even if you're at Broad Street or West Holler Street. You're going to go to the nearest gasoline station. This is an impulsive use if you're going by, or as what they say, pass-by use. If you're going by and you need some gas, you're going to stop. And so, there's no new traffic. The traffic already exists in that particular area. The loss of use of being able to put gasoline station to the owner is not outweighed by any gain to the public. The public is not going to gain anything more by allowing this in, so it's the benefit of the owner. And it can be, and there's no meaningful gain to the public by denying the variance. But rather, the variance will cause to injure the private rights of the owner and would unconstitutionally deprive the owner of the right to make a viable use of it. And the fact of using footage is kind of like interference with businesses. It's stopping a business from being operated on. This will be a new facility, just like the storage facility. As I indicated, the storage facility will be quiet, has very little traffic. The one good thing is that provides taxes to the city of Nashua. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Lionel.
Regarding traffic, as a gas station, if somebody's driving by in Amher Street, they'd have to know to turn down Blackstone Drive to get it.
No, there's, there's an entrance. It's, it's an in-and-out. It's in-and-out. If you look at the front part, it's very difficult to say, but there's already an entrance and exit on Amher Street that can be used. Blackstone Drive would probably be used in the case of you use the gasoline station and you want to go back towards the city of Nashua, you could take a right at that light.
So, the entrance, from what I see is, is if you're facing the property, Blackstone Drive's on your right, would be the far left of the property.
Okay, I see it now.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. It's a little, yeah, it's hard to see, but it's there.
Yeah.
What is the proposed height of this storage facility?
Pardon?
What is the proposed height of the storage facility?
Storage is five stories. It's an allowed height in that area. Fact is, you can go up to 60 feet, but we'd be only going up to 50 feet. And then the, under the tab four in the rear, you see that there are windows, and some of them will be fake, but the purpose of it is to make it look like an office building so it fits better into the neighborhood.
Most of the storage facilities I've seen with the windows that lit 24 hours.
No, these are fake. These will be fake windows, just like the, what's the name of the pharmacy on...
Walgreens.
Pardon?
Walgreens.
Walgreens, down here. The second story has windows in it. They're fake.
Thank you.
Ms. Vitale.
Have, have you had meetings with the butters?
Pardon?
Have you had meetings with the butters?
I have had talk with the, what you call it, the repair shop. And his attorney's here this evening, so he'll be speaking. But I have with the office building and with some of the condo units, owners that are closest to where this would go. And out of all the ones I met, there's a, there's a letter that's in there in the file, but the letter mainly concerns and concerns planning board issues. Why don't I address those issues so that, that you know how they would affect? One of them is the air conditioners on the roof, that they could be loud. They're not. They're cast in, and they're enclosed, and they're hampered, and they're stopped down. That's the new air conditioners that they take. They don't make the noise that the old ones used to do. And lighting, the lights all have to be cast down. You cannot have any light that goes off your lot onto other persons. It's one of the requirements of the planning board. And they talked, he talked about traffic, but there were only, it's nationally recognized, there's only five cars a day is the average. And if you are familiar with some storage places, you're familiar with the fact that they don't have many cars that go into them.
Ms. Vitale.
The entrances, it's going to be away from the back of the building, the entrances into the proposed storage facility?
Yes.
They'll all be on the other side from the residential area.
An example is if you're Southwood Drive here in Nashua, off the thing, there is one that exists there, and it's very quiet. When I go by, I look sometimes. I'm not going to say I look all the time when I go by it because of my office, but I see very few cars.
So, Mr. Prunier, I think Ms. Vitale asked, did you ask for the entrance into the building or the entrance into the parking lot for the building?
I can, I can see the parking lots off of, into the back area. It looks like it's off of Blackstone. But the entrance to the building, I just wanted to see if there's any entrances, not counting where you might have to have places that you could exit the building, but the entrances to the building would all be on that front corner?
Would be, would be in this front corner.
So, so tab four, the first drawing shows the Blackstone front elevation, and I think that's where the doors are to get the storage. Should be on the right side of the building.
Okay.
Yeah. Correct, Ms. Prunier? That would be, yeah, there would be no, I mean, unless for emergency exits, but there would be no other doors that, that clients would be using.
It's five stories, so you have to find the elevator and take your stuff up. You can't, it's, it's not where you can back up to the, to your facility.
And again, just to review, from what I understood, and that, that there are other more intensive uses that could go in this location.
I just go down general business. All I did was go down general business and looked at the Ps and took some of out, made the most noise and most traffic and so forth. And I was very surprised to see that you could put a sanitary landfill in the rear. That's an allowed use. And fact is, I'm probably, no, no, no.
And then, and then in respect to the, to the variance for the gas station, if there are no pumps, right, you wouldn't have to be in front of us because somebody could put a store there, right? That would be no issue, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, like you said, I think you alluded to the fact that things have changed over 30 years, and, and I think that, you know, I know that there is a lot of concern about round-polling across the street, but I think, again, in talking to some of the people, that I understood that, that, that it's very different today where tanks are very, when they put it in the ground, there's, they're double-lined. You have the EPA, the DEP, and every federal agency on top of you, right? So, it's not something that would, could get done unless they felt it was safe.
You have to enclose them in concrete barriers and so forth that they have. It's, it's an expense, very expensive today to put a gasoline station in.
So, this would be, again, this, this gasoline station would be something like, like, you know, convenience store type, gas station type thing, like, you know, whatever, 7-Eleven, Cumberland Farms, that type of thing, you know? That type of idea?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Prunier? Ms. Vitale?
If this was approved, you can be back before us for signage?
You know, that's what I was wondering. I gotta tell you, I know that I mask this when I come, and I tell my clients, you know, get your signage so that we can come and we own one time. The board likes to consider these things one time. And I gotta, I'm honest with you, I most, I come back again, unfortunately. But I tell my clients, you gotta live within the zoning ordinance, and I try as much as possible to try to keep the signs down.
Thank you for your honesty. Thank you.
I hope I'm honest with you at all times.
Any other questions for Attorney Prunier? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none, anybody in the audience that'd like to speak with concerns or in opposition of the application? Name and address, please.
My name is Peter Bennett. I'm an attorney at 111 Concord Street in Nashua, and I represent Bukarski Realty Holdings. And Bukarski Realty Holdings is in a butter directly to the west. It's the Collision Center directly to the west of the property in question. And I want to start by just saying, Mark Bukarski, who is the principal of Bukarski Realty Holdings and also the operator of the Collision Center, is opposed to having a, a large storage facility, five-story building essentially adjacent to his lot, on the same lot as the, the gas station convenience store. It's, as Attorney Prunier has indicated, it was, the area was rezoned from Park Industrial to General Business just a short time ago. It doesn't seem to make sense to go back to that when, as he points out, there are other options in the general business section. I want to start out by saying, the, in terms of the, the issue of the variance for the gas station, the 750-foot requirement, my client has no objection to that particular variance, but he does with respect to the, the use variance. The application speaks of this particular site, proposed site for the, for the storage facility, the self-storage facility, as a rear lot and that lacks visibility and, and in a, in a situation where it makes it sound as if it is a separate lot. Of course, it's all part of one lot, so that facility does not have to be located where, or any general, any use in the general business area does not have to be located far away from Amher Street. I think it was chosen to do that because it was, they wanted room for the gas station in the front part, but I don't think this makes it a rear lot. And, and I think that any general business use of this portion would have plenty of visibility onto Amher Street. There are, I think, over 200 feet of frontage on Amher Street. So, I don't think that there are any special conditions in this case which would justify the granting of a, showing of a hardship in support of the variance in this case. There are plenty of possible uses for the property other than a storage facility. And, you know, notwithstanding the argument that it was just, it was recently Park Industrial, for the most part, the, these types of facilities are almost solely in industrial zones. And the purpose of the original rezoning, which is to concentrate retail on Amher Street, is kind of inconsistent to go backwards, if you will, and go back to the point where you have essentially an industrial use in this, in addition to the gas station use at the front of the lot. So, for these reasons, we would oppose the variance. I don't think there, I think the, the proposed use for an industrial use in a residential zone is contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, as most recently reflected in the zoning change, and I don't think that the, under the circumstances, the applicant can, can establish a hardship.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Vitale? Hold on, sir. There's a question for Ms. Vitale.
So, if I understand you correctly, there, your, your client doesn't have any issues with the convenience store, gas station?
Correct.
Section, but only a double use of the property and putting a storage facility in the back? Would there be an issue if it was just the storage facility on the property and no convenience store?
I think it would be, I think it would be more likely to be comfortable for him, but the problem is, it's still an industrial use in a general business zone, and he, and it's, it's my client's belief that it should be a general business permitted use because there are many options. I mean, I can understand why the owner wishes to do it this way because it puts two uses on, on one property, but I don't think you can sort of create a hardship or permit a hardship to occur just because you decide to locate something further away from Amher Street on one lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak and with questions or concerns or oppositions to this application? Okay, seeing none, per our bylaws, Mr. Prunier, you, Attorney Prunier, I'm sorry, you'll have five minutes to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I guess this is an example of when a son gets angry with his mother. Mark Pekarsky is the son of Marilyn Pekarsky. Marilyn Pekarsky owns the lot that I am requesting variance is on. That's his mother. Let me just state that the, why I say the rear lot, if you went out and looked at the site, and I know a lot of you did, but I don't know how much you looked at the rear back of the lot, it is almost like a lot by itself, and at various times, it was going to be subdivided. The reason why is that you don't have the exit out into Amherst Street, so it makes it better if it's combined as a mixed use on the piece of property, which is allowed under the zoning ordinance to have two uses on a particular piece of property. If it was important to this board that we subdivide the rear lot from the front lot, you could make that a condition, and we'd be happy with it.
Any questions for Attorney Prunier? Thank you. Sir, you have five minutes if you'd like to speak in rebuttal to Mr. Prunier says?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. So, with that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And Ms. Vitale will be voting on this case. Mr. Shaw?
I think, yeah, I think the two things are very, very different in my mind. I have no problem with the gas station and that distance variance, and that's, to me, yeah, I don't, I don't see any problems there. I guess I do, I just can't find support for the storage facility, and I think it really does come down to the fact of this rezoning as recently as it was, and I guess this is one of these cases where the fact that it was switched over, and I know there had been a lot of discussion, and, and, you know, we were seeing it constantly with a lot of GB kinds of requests in what had been PI-zoned Amherst Street. The Board of Aldermen did address that and did this conversion, and so I think if this, this property or this part of Amherst Street was intended to continue to support park industrial uses, then it should have stayed that way. The fact that it's a GB zone now, I, I guess I, I feel like it's been very recently acted upon, and again, that, that usage was basically taken, taken out of what's allowed there as kind of an active part of, of that rezoning, so I, I just don't, don't see that it's something I can support.
Just Lionel. I pretty much concur with Mr. Shaw. The gas station doesn't bother me, but I, I can't support the storage facility there. I don't, just because it may or may not be less intensive use than some other things allowed in GB, does not by itself create a hardship that says we should go back to something that was allowed in the PI zone. There are other possible uses of that property, there's, it's sort of a self-created hardship, so I, I do not support the storage facility.
Ms. Vitale?
I'm probably at the same spot. I don't have a problem with the gas station, even though the amount of feet from another one is less than what is allowed. I, I, I think it's a good use for that property as it's presented there and the location with the light at the corner, et cetera. But again, having the, the second use at the back in a, what was previously zoned differently, I'm not, I'm not in support of that.
I forgot to read a letter we got into the record in opposition.
That's where it was.
And I guess I'll do that now. And if, if there is, and again, procedurally, maybe, Mr. Shaw, you can help me out, I think is it, it's the right thing to do that now, and does that open up anything that, that we should have done?
Yeah, I, I think we should make a motion to reopen the public hearing and also allow Attorney Prunier to respond if there is anything that he would deem appropriate to respond to, since this could carry new information or new position or new issue.
Do we also allow for the attorney for the abutting property to speak or not? And then, this is where?
I think we could go through the sequence.
Okay.
Just allowing for a rebuttal if necessary. Looks like Mr. Falk might have something.
I was just going to say, the Attorney Prunier did recognize the letter, and he did address a couple of things that he believed were more planning board issues and zoning board issues, but I think it's proper to open the public hearing and allow everybody the chance to rebut.
I'll make a motion to reopen the public, public hearing on this case, since we have a letter that we need to include in opposition.
Seconded by Ms. Vitale, all in favor? That's five, okay, that passes. Okay, so I'll read the letter into the record. This is from Henry W. Hall Jr. at Four Rudean Drive, Unit 303, Nashua, and they have share. The city, it's to the City of Nashua's zoning board of adjustment, in reference to Four Blackstone Drive, requests for self-storage facility, gas station, convenience store. Yes, sir, madam, I am the abutted to the subject property and am, and am unable to attend the hearing on August twenty eighth due to a longstanding commitment. I would like to express my opposition to these two requests for variance. I have owned and lived in my condominium for twenty-nine years. I have a direct line of sight. The lot in question from my living room windows, bedroom windows and balcony is approximately one hundred twenty-five feet from my unit location to the property line. The corner of my building where other residents resides is closer. The other residential building at Two Rudean Drive is even closer than that. There are forty-eight units combined into two buildings, so half, twenty-four, have windows or, and/or balconies that face the subject property. This request to allow a climate-controlled self-storage facility on this part of the lot will directly impact our lives and homes. Currently, the area where this building is proposed is a parking lot. The business that uses it operates roughly Monday through Friday, seven thirty a.m. to five p.m. Self-storage implies uses available seven days a week. Weekends would most likely be the busiest time. Some facilities allow unrestricted access twenty-four hours. This will add to the noise of people, cars and trucks, big and small, as well as additional traffic to and from Blackstone Drive. Currently, Blackstone Drive serves as the only entrance and exit to over six hundred residential units. Climate-controlled indicates that there will be HVAC unit, units that will add to the noise. There will be, there will need to be lighting for parking and security around the building. Currently, the lights face into the lot only from our side. This is only permitted in the HB, PI, AI and GI zones. Most of these zones do not directly abut residential areas. This use is not conducive to residential area. The application says that this lot was recently rezoned from PI where this, this use is allowed. This lot was rezoned in two thousand thirteen. According to city records, the current owner of the subject lot purchased it in two thousand seventeen. The filings I reviewed in the city hall state that this use will be housed in a five-story building that will look like an office building. The building will tower over our homes. The office building at five forty-seven Amherst Street is four stories and is the tallest building west of Somerset Parkway. The building will be out of place as well as diminishing the value of my many residential homes. Who wants to look out the window and see a five-story office building right next door? I believe that this request will be detrimental to the abutters and should not be granted a variance. The second request for variance to allow gas station with the property line less than seven hundred fifty feet from another gas station property line will also add to traffic on Blackstone Drive. This new station will be five hundred twelve feet from existing gas, convenience store, car wash, car vacuuming station. The existing location is not open twenty-four hours anymore. The only access will be by Blackstone Drive. At the corner of Selina Ave and Amherst Street, approximately two thousand feet west of the proposed gas station convenience store, there is a gas station, convenience store, car wash, car vacuum station, oil change facility. The gas station and convenience store are open twenty-four hours. East approximately two thousand feet from the proposed gas station convenience store at the corner of Dearwood Drive and Amherst Street is a gas station convenience store that is open twenty-four hours. Is less than a mile, is less than a mile there are currently three gas station convenience stores, two of which are open twenty-four hours. Additionally, across Amherst Street from the site is Round Pond, is about a thousand feet from the property line. This is a nice little pond with wildlife, which draws fishermen summer and winter, as well as ice skating. Adding fuel tanks that close to the body of water should be seriously considered. The sightline to the proposed station is, I think, going to be an issue as well. The office building at five forty-seven Amherst Street, as well as the trees and landscaping along Amherst Street, block the view of the proposed site until you are almost on Blackstone Drive. This could mean sudden break in and turning as people attempt to make the last minute turn to access the station. There will be no Amherst Street access to or from the site. The subject of noise from customers, fuel deliveries, often early or late, so as not to interfere with customers, dumpster empties, trucks delivering products to be sold in the store are serious concern. Is this station to be open twenty-four hours? What about lighting? Along with the new thing at gas pumps, small TV screens that are, that Blair adds to you as you fuel up. Having a minimum distance between gas stations is sound zoning. I believe this request for variance should be denied. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Henry W. Hall Jr. Mr. Prunier, if you want to take it off, you can come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm here representing the applicant. I anticipated, I thought you all had copies of the letter, but I anticipated that in my presentation, that these were, a lot of them were planning board issues, and that, but I gave you the answer to those issues as well, so I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Attorney Bennett, if you'd like to come up?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. Again, I apologize for that. So, where we were in our discussion, I think Ms. Vitale, you had just finished up, or you had, do you have any more comments?
Good.
Ms. Boras?
I'm actually not in support, and I concur with my colleagues with all the concerns.
So, you're not in support of both, both, both?
Oh, I got it correct. I am in support of the gas station. I'm not in support of the storage unit as proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Ms. McKay?
I think I'm going to say that I am in concurrence with my fellow board members, and the biggest issue for me with the storage facility is the zoning laws were just changed five years ago, and it doesn't seem logical to try and undo a change that was studied and made based on information and facts that were not, we're not privy to them now, but they changed. And so, for us to undo the change would be to undo the rules we're supposed to be operating under, and so I cannot support the storage center.
I, I'm in favor of the gas station. Be honest with you, I'm on the fence about the storage facility, but at this point, I think that, you know, there are, there are four votes here that are not in favor of the storage facility, so I won't, at this time, I won't pursue any, anything with that, with that on my side. I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with where we're at. So, again, nothing that I, I would offer, I think, would, for myself, it would be more because I have other questions I think are, may or may not be, in my mind, important at this point to go through, so, so I, I will rest at that point, so I'm in support of the, like, the gas station. So, as a whole, it seems like there's folks here that may want, is there somebody who would like to make a motion for this application? Mr. Shaw?
I think, I think we ought to take it as two, two motions because of not only, I think, where we're at, but I think just the nature of them.
For my clarification, please, so we're going to consider this request one and request two for how I'm writing this?
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do the use variance request first.
Okay, thank you.
As request one. And I'll just do the, the initial part of this once, so the owner, again, is Wilmar LLC, the applicant is Weston Associates, and the address is Four Blackstone Drive, with the request for the, this first motion is only regarding the use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 193, to construct a climate-controlled self-storage facility. And this is in the GB zone, Ward Two. The applicant has stated that the variance is needed for the proposed use of the property, and the board feels that we cannot support the, this request for what wasn't allowed, or should, should say what isn't allowed use in the PI zone. This property had previously been PI-zoned, it was part of a rezoning in this area of Amherst Street that occurred five years ago, and was, was well-considered in terms of the transitional nature of usages in Amherst Street, and so the board feels it's not appropriate to consider allowing a PI usage in this zone. So, the board believes that there's many other allowed and reasonable uses that the applicant could seek for the entirety of this property. So, we also believe it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and I think much of the commentary I just made is specific to that, the, the zoning and rezoning of this area specifically. There was some testimony through the letter in opposition regarding concerns about property values and the effects on the surrounding parcels for those residents that are immediately adjacent to the proposed storage facility use. It is, it is contrary to public interest and substantial justice, would not be served to allow this use, so therefore, I am making the motion to deny this use variance as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of denying this variance? It's five to nothing?
And I'd like to offer my next motion regarding the same property, and this is for the area variance to allow a convenience store gasoline station within seven hundred fifty feet of the property line to the property line of another gas station where there's five hundred and twelve feet proposed, and this variance is from Land Use Code Section 190-45A. So, the board does feel that the, the proximity, while still reasonably close, is still meeting about two-thirds of the requirement for the property line distances. As the applicant also stated, there's a feeling that some of this proximity separation was both more highlighting residential aspects, but also perhaps more when gas stations like this were previously more service-oriented in terms of vehicle service, whereas this, this certainly, this convenience store gas station has no proposals for any kind of service to be provided for vehicles. So, that, that this proposed use is reasonable considering the location of the property. It would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no expectation that there would be negative effects on property values, although there, again, there was some, some concern expressed by the opposition abutter, especially regarding some of the, the noise and operational aspects, which is something I believe the planning board could, could and would address in, in whatever happens ultimately with site plan approval. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served, and again, I move to approve this area variance.
Seconded by, I'll second the motion. Seconded by, our second motion.
I didn't want to hog all the second.
It's okay. Are you all okay? Okay, all in favor? That's five to nothing. So Mr. Prunier heard? Okay, thank you very much for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number five. What's on the agenda is a rehearing request. Yes. Let's see what this is. So let me read this into the record. It was, this was a, this is a rehearing request for, this is for owner Patricia Palmer of 9 Victor Ave. This is a rehearing request from the 7/24/18 public hearing. And that was described as Palmer Revocable Trust Owner Patricia Palmer, applicant of 9 Victor Avenue, sheet 111, Lot 30, was requesting the following variances. One, from land use code section 190-32, to allow a second 10-foot wide curb cut to a recently approved accessory dwelling unit. And two, from a land use code section 190-192, section C, to exceed maximum driveway width 20 feet existing, 24 feet permitted, a total of 30 feet proposed. It's in the area zone, Ward 6. So in this case, we will have Ms. Boras vote, but Ms. Vitale, we appreciate your input. Thank you. All right, so I'll, as usual, we'll go through the criteria as, as set out here. So the first question that we have to consider is, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying somebody the right to be heard, et cetera. If there's, if there's discussion, we'll have discussion. If not, I'll just go around the table. Is there any discussion, first of all, on this question? All right, so we'll go around the table. Definitely take your input, Ms. Vitale. So, Ms. Vitale?
I don't think there was any procedural error in this case.
Okay. Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Boras?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Mr. Boucher, no. Second question is, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for special exception and/or variance? Is there any discussion on this point? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Vitale?
No, I believe we discussed it fully.
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Boras?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
And Mr. Boucher, no. Third question we have to consider is, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Is there any discussion on this question? Okay.
I guess, you know, it's one of those things, this oftentimes, I think there is some quote "new information," but does it rise to the level of being something that's really actually germane to the specifics of what we would decide on? And in my view, the commentary and the new information is really about the kind of situation of how the applicant and her family members using the accessory dwelling unit would be interacting and going through to get between and betwixt the unit. So I think while I understand the applicant's concerns perhaps about logistically the way things will work, it, I don't believe it actually is something that is really key new information in terms of making a decision.
Ms. McKay.
Here she states, "If need be, I will cut down my own driveway so I will not exceed the 24 feet." If she cuts down her own driveway and she does not exceed the 24 feet, does she even need to come here?
She still needs a second curb cut. That's what she's asking for.
So I think that's new information.
No, we just actually discussed that at the time.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I didn't see anything in her letter that wasn't touched on during the initial presentation.
I understand, Ms. McKay, what you're saying. And I think, again, with the, with the ADUs, the Aldermen have specifically really made it clear that they don't want a second curb cut with an ADU, right? So I think that, not just this case, but in any general case, I think that if there was a pre-existing driveway, I don't think we would have this discussion and an ADU went in, right? Because the property would not be being used any different than it was before the ADU. So I, you know, you know, this is, I think, some of the struggles that we're gonna see and people are gonna have. But I do understand what you're, what you're saying. I, I think, I did the same thing. I kind of asked that question during the original meeting, right?
Thank you.
To try to see if that, but again, it's very clear. So, so.
I think I was just trying to be fair.
Right, no.
You know.
Any, any more discussion? Ms. Vitale on the question?
No, I didn't see any new information that I didn't think that we knew about it in the first time that we discussed it.
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Boras?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Mr. Boucher, no. And the last question we have to consider is, is there anything which would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Vitale?
No, I would choose the same, I would vote the same way.
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Bor, Ms. Boras?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Mr. Boucher is a no. So I, at this point, do we want to make a motion? We want to make a motion?
I can make it. Okay. Make a motion regarding the rehearing request from the 7/24/18 public hearing, the Palmer Revocable Trust Owner Patricia Palmer, applicant 9 Victor Avenue, sheet 111, Lot 30, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-32, to allow a second 10-foot wide curb cut for a recently approved accessory dwelling unit, and two from land use code section 190-192C, to exceed maximum driveway width 20 feet existing, 24 feet permitted, a total of 30 feet proposed, area zone, Ward 6. The board considered the four primary questions and categories regarding this rehearing request and found unanimous concurrence that there was no procedural error, that the, which includes things like improper notice or denying someone the right to be heard, that it was not an illegal decision. The board did discuss somewhat the matter of, did the request cover any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? But the board felt that the, most of the information was presented before, or the little bit that was new was not germane to what we would consider for making the decision. So that question also was a no unanimously. And the board also likewise felt that unanimously that there would not be anything that would or could cause the board to make a different decision. So therefore, with the, the full support of the board and the consideration of these questions, I move that we deny the rehearing request.
All those in favor of denying?
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Boras, second? I'm sorry. Okay.
I know you want to go home.
No, I'll stay here as long as I have to.
[laughing].
All those in favor of denying the rehearing request? That's five to nothing. So that's denied. Okay. So we have meeting minutes from August 14th. Does anybody see anything from, I was not here, so.
Neither was I.
I will vote on them, but I, I went through them. I, you know, I didn't see anything that didn't make sense to me, but again, I didn't know if anybody.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the August 14th meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Mr. Lionel, all in favor?
Okay.
All right, that was, Ms. McKay, that would be Ms. Vitale.
We need to slow up. The motion was.
To approve, motion to approve the August 14th.
Oh. Actually, I wasn't here on the 14th, so.
Yep.
Okay, JP, you made the motion.
Abstaining.
Seconded by?
I abstained.
I abstained.
Okay, so let's, let's go back for a minute. So Ms. Vitale is abstaining, so.
And this was to approve?
Approve, okay, so let me, can I just restate? Let's go back and restate. So those in favor of approving the August 14th meeting minutes, that's five to no, that's.
Well, I wasn't here, so.
No, it's okay to vote on. We've had this discussion many times.
Okay. Then I will approve.
It's just that I believe that Ms. Vitale's point in this case is Ms. Boras was here, so essentially, that's why she's abstaining.
Oh, she will abstain. Oh, I get it.
To allow Ms. Boras as the alternate to vote.
So, so it's five to nothing with Ms. Boras as the.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. You know when you're ready. And we also have the new agenda for September 11th.
Which will now be the 12th.
Which will now be the 12th.
We'll, we'll have the ad changed on the city's website, you have our notifications. We've notified all the, all the applicants already and all their, all the owners, so everybody should know about it.
I guess for anybody that's actually watching or wondering, just like the Board of Alderman, because that is the primary election day, we will delay our meeting until the following day, and that is in our bylaws.
Right. So we should be all set, and we have the room reserved and everything, so.
Okay, so we have, right now, five cases on the agenda. Does anybody see any regional impact?
No.
All right. So, so, no one's, so, we don't, so there's no regional impact, we don't need to vote on that, okay? All right, is there any other business or anything else anybody else would like to cover before we adjourn? Does anybody have a motion? Mr. Shaw? Motion is to adjourn, seconded by, anybody second? Ms. Vitale, all in favor of, they say we're adjourned at 9?
9:12.
9:12.
Yeah, appropriate.